Okay, thank you and welcome back to our meeting. We will proceed with the rest of our agenda. We move into our committee of the whole Section 6. And the first area for discussion is general government. And the first item, 6.1.1, proposed municipal property dispositions. And the first item up for discussion is 102 Dejardins Street in Field. Okay, and with that I'll pass it to our clerk for a overview of...
Through you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request from the owner of the store in Field, who is requesting there is a vacant property on the corner of Dejardins and La Rocke. The property was obtained by the municipality through a tax sale quite a number of years ago. It is vacant. He is seeking to acquire the property for the purposes of additional parking for his store.
There is just a key map in your packages for you and some communication from the proponent who would like to acquire the property. Does counsel have any questions or comments at this point? We're looking for whether counsel would be amenable to disposition of this property, at which point Madam Clerk would do the background work of getting the appraisals on the property done, et cetera. Questions or comments? Counselor St. Louis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did we, I think this came up in the past, correct, about that little corner?
No, not that one.
No? Okay. Anyway, my only question is, they're talking about residential. It's a residential structure, but they want to do a parking. Does that have any effect to the RRR and all that stuff?
Through you, Madam Chair. Depending on what their actual project entails, if it entailed, if it was commercial with accessory residential, it's already appropriately zoned. If it were residential, completely residential with accessory parking, then it would have to be rezoned to a residential zone. But the details would be worked out in the process.
Okay, thank you. And currently, the lot is vacant. There are no structures on that lot, so it was demolished. In the, if I may ask a question, just in the email from the proponent, they indicate that they may want to look at a small gas station. Is there, I mean, obviously, that's going to be their concern because, given the whole lying, whether or not there are approvals from Municipal, the Environment, for that kind of use?
Gas stations are regulated by the technical... Okay. ...involvants, and I'm certain that they would be required to do...
Site assessments.
Site assessments while technical to determine whether they could have above ground...
Because it is hazard...
That's correct.
Okay, but that is not our responsibility. Our only responsibility is whether or not we are in favor of disposing of the property.
That's right, at this point.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Counselor Pellerin?
Madam Mayor.
I see you, Counselor Restol. Thank you.
Just curious, the plan, is it under the elevation of the seven mile flood?
Yes.
So you can't even build there?
You would be required to raise the property above the floodplain in order to construct for residential uses.
I'm going to go to Counselor Restol first, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question on the information that was provided in the package. And the statement that we, it's coming task to declare surplus for the purpose of selling to the store owner, do we usually do that very specific like that? Are we just going to declare surplus? And if the store owner is the, you know, high bidder, or however the process is, that they'll purchase it? Or are we very pigeonholing it that we're going to declare surplus only for the purpose of this store owner purchasing it?
That is counsel's decision. We can declare it surplus and then determine how we want to dispose of it. Counsel does have the ability to sole source should they so wish, or could put it up for tender if that's the direction of counsel. For now, I'm just looking for a direction on whether to declare it surplus in order to begin the process of obtaining the required appraisal.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Counselor Larve, you first, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That property, for the question of, for the flood zone, the store, prior to this new store that was built, was in the flood zone. They raised the level of the store to the height of the bridge, which is no longer in flood zone. So they would have to raise it to that same height if they were to use that property to do... And that used to be a commercial property. There used to be a bank and a restaurant on that. So is it still under...
Still zoned commercial.
Excuse me?
It's still zoned commercial.
It's still zoned commercial. Okay, perfect. Well...
It says here, sorry, in the report, that it's rural residential.
That might be a typo. I believe it is actually commercial. I will have to verify.
Yeah, it used to be commercial. So if I may, the town of Field is a small community, which had not had... If the intent is to put a gas station there, I'd definitely be in favor of selling it to them because the town of Field does need accommodations like its gas to make this community viable. So I think they're great. They're really good people, and they're taking care of Field. So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pellerin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, was an appraisal done in 2016? When it was a tax sale and...
No, it was an unsuccessful tax sale, and it was vested in municipality as there were no bidders.
So just to, because I'm not that familiar with the tax sale process, but at the time, do you know how much was owed in tax? How much would we have accepted? Or is the failed tax sale the fact that nobody put a bid at all?
That's correct.
Yeah. But if somebody had put a bid that was less than what was owed in tax, could we have accepted it and written off the rest? Okay, so we have to accept at least what's owed in tax?
Under the tax sale process, yes.
Okay.
But once it's vested, those rules no longer apply. So at that time, counsel made the decision like we did with that list of properties. There were some that we did not feel were sellable.
Okay.
And we vested those, which means that the municipality took ownership. So once that happens, I think... Sometimes I start speaking and I'm like, I hope I'm right with what I'm saying, but I believe that once it's actually vested, then there is no longer the requirement to actually fulfill that kind of minimum bid to cover the bid taxes.
So even...
The tax sale process.
So if we have a, sorry, if I may ask you a follow-up. If we have an appraisal done and we're presented with an offer, let's say that's 75% of the appraisal, do we still, can we still accept the lower offer?
We can. So there have been, there have been people who have countered, counter-offered on municipal, like when we've disposed the land before. You know, I think since the beginning of this term, with this particular counsel, there hasn't been as much appetite to negotiate on that because the discussions around the table have been the appraised value is the appraised value, and we are the guardians of the taxpayer dollar. But it doesn't mean that for a circumstance where the land has been vacant for some time, that there is no, seemingly no real demand otherwise, that counsel wouldn't intervene in that discussion again. It could be different depending on the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
So, but yes, we do have the ability to accept lower than the appraised value on the decision. Other questions or comments? Okay, so at this point, we're just looking for a general consensus that a resolution would come back at the next meeting to declare surplus. And at that point, Madam Clerk would begin the process of obtaining the appraisals on that property. And then, once the appraisal is received, counsel can decide whether to single-source the sale, whether to put it out into the open market, and make the decision on how to go about disposing of the property. But the first step is to declare surplus. The second step is to... So everybody... What is this part people? Thank you.
Can I just...
Oh, sorry.
I just actually noticed in the first email I received from the proponent, he asked about 102 and 104.
Yes.
And the second is only for 102. I'm going to have to get clarification from the proponent.
We own 104 as well?
Yeah, we own all of the property. If indeed he wanted, that one was, I think that one was the gas station property?
Yes.
Was that the...
A restaurant and gas station.
Yeah. Which one was the gas station?
The small one that's not included.
Okay, the other one. So if, would counsel have an appetite if in fact he wants to both, to declare them both surplus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is a second request for a property disposition, which is Borgo Street. There is a memo in your packages. And then...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This property is located, it is in front of the property. I can't remember the municipal address, the municipal... It is located in the water, it's a water lot in front of 171 Borgo. It was a block on the plan of subdivision that laid out the Borgo Street subdivision. It was, I'm assuming, I'm going to take a guess, that it was probably a parkland dedication at the time. I don't have the subdivision file that this relates to anymore. But typically, there's always lands dedicated to the municipality in a subdivision, and this may well have been it. It is located, like I said, directly in front of this 171, and it is the owners of 171 that are looking to purchase it, as it does lie between their house and the Sturgeon River. And they've essentially had the enjoyment of that land because it lands...
Beneficial ownership.
Beneficial ownership of the property for many, many years. And they are like looking to settle their affairs and would like to officially acquire the property and add it to their own.
Questions? Counselor Pellerin?
How do they access their property through that piece of... Of that?
Their house is located where the red arrow points.
Yeah.
Is where the requesters live now. So they're looking to add the yellow section onto their existing residential property.
Okay. Okay, okay, so the vacant land is between them and the river.
Correct.
Okay, I was looking at the other one.
Okay. Questions? Other questions? Counselor Restol?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just looking at this sketch or the map that was provided, the, I'll call it a laneway to the left of the property for the picture that we have, that, if I'm not mistaken, is that a unopened road allowance that goes to the lake or the river?
Yes, it is, it is an unopened road allowance, and the municipality actually has a lift station located at the, close to the road end of it. But yes, it is the extension of the Micho Street.
Okay, and second question, if I can. Is that, I'll try to word this the right way. If that, if that laneway were to be open, would that provide access to that piece of property for anybody who might be interested in it? Or is it landlocked because of that? And the reason for my question is because we all know how much waterfront property is these days, everywhere, especially within the municipality. And again, as one of the earlier comments were, being the stewards of the land for our municipal, municipality, if there's an opportunity to sell a piece of land that might be of very significant value to it for someone to possibly build there, I'd be interested in looking at that if that's something, that's a possibility, rather than sell it for a much lower price because it's landlocked. So I just wanted to provide some context to my question.
The property, the Micho Street road allowance is not unopened. It is unmaintained. There's a difference. It was never closed by bylaw, so it is a legal road allowance. I don't know exactly, and I think Ms. Henning would be able to give me direction on the location of the actual... There is a sanitary lift pump located on it, and whether or not it could be used for access would, I suppose, depend on where that lift station is sitting.
We need that for the access to the lift station and the drainage there.
So it appears that we wouldn't be wanting to turn that into a street due to the municipal infrastructure located on it.
Okay, and if I could, just one other quick question. Looking, again, looking at the map, there is a property to the right of the existing, or the existing homeowners. I guess 171 is the one that would go straight back to the river, but there's also, I don't know, I have no idea what the number would be, but property owner to the right on the picture. Again, and just looking like the previous question from... So from, like the last question, are we, are we only going to offer this to one person? Or is it going to be declared surplus, and there's a value to it? And if the person, property owner to the right of the property might be interested, is that an opportunity? Are we solely saying it's available only to the one landowner?
The property to the right of it has access to the river? Their property extends all the way to the river?
Yep, I see that. I'm just wondering if they might be interested in acquiring more property than their existing property.
Again, it's counsel's decision how they want to dispose of it.
Right.
Or if they want to dispose of it.
Okay, that was just my question again, if it's just sole sourced again, like the property in Vernor, that we are, sorry, in Field that we had just spoke about, or if it's just generally surplus and open to anybody who might be interested. Thanks again for your responses.
Thank you. Counselor Pellerin?
Where is the lift station?
I think it's the structure right at the front, near the Borgo Street road, right? Looks like a little circle.
At the very end of Micho, yes.
Okay, so is there a right of way? You see, the lines don't quite match up, or is it just...
That's the CJ.
That's just map.
So there's no right of way that goes all the way to the back to the water?
Yeah, well, there's a 66-foot road allowance that runs... If you look at the subdivision map, Counselor Pellerin, the Micho Street, that lift station is sitting sort of in the middle of that Micho Street stub that goes to the river.
Okay, so like Mr. Counselor Restol was saying, this lot could be sold by itself?
Again, there's, there's a drainage course through there, and that lift station is sitting, sitting in the middle of it. So in terms of creating it as a maintained road allowance isn't something that we probably want to do.
But you could grant a right of way that was driveway wide.
It's a driveway.
Yes, that's certainly doable.
Driveway only the 15 feet at the most. So yeah, something to consider for sure.
Other questions or comments on that? Oh, Counselor Pellerin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, just the clarification to pick up on what Counselor Pellerin said. So you could grant a right of way on that section of Micho Street for what is, for the piece of land outlined in red. That would become a separate block waterfront.
Correct. Or we could sell a 15-foot strip to them with it as well to make a driveway if that was doable based on, we'd have to get some survey work done to see where things lay on the ground.
Actually, close the road a little.
Close a portion of the road, yeah.
Because there's never going to be a road there. I think, you know, like I share kind of the, I think, the thought process of Counselor Restol and Counselor Pellerin. The lot that's outlined there is a sufficient size because it is, it would have access to full municipal servicing?
Yes.
So it is of an adequate size to be a standalone lot?
Yes.
Because it's serviced. And so I just want to keep that in mind, that there is value there. Counselor Pellerin?
Thank you. Just, so I imagine then that whatever appraisal we would get would take that into account, that it has the potential of being a standalone waterfront lot.
Yeah.
And not a landlocked or water locked lot.
Yeah. Counselor Pellerin?
The 66 feet is attached to which property, or is it the municipal place?
It's the municipal.
The municipal, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Questions or comments? So the same question applies to the last item. Is counsel of the mind that we'd be willing to declare it surplus? And if the answer to that is yes, then the resolution would come back to the next meeting and Madam Clerk would work on getting the appraisal. And the appraisal would take into account the factors that we, as far as the value.
And at that time, counsel would decide how they wish to dispose of it.
And then we can decide how to dispose of it. So Counselor Restol, are you early voting, or do you have a question?
If I can do both, I'll do both.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm okay with looking at the declaration and looking at a value for it. I just wanted to add, I know we've talked about it, and you mentioned that just a minute ago, Madam Mayor, just if it helps in direction, if we can, with the value of the, you know, the appraisal of the lot, if it can include the fact that we would be potentially looking at access to it, not just as a standalone, a standalone lot, but also with access through that laneway that's there.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Pellerin?
Just one small clarification. So is it 0.32 acres? Because that wouldn't be 13 hectares.
No, it's not 13 hectares.
So it's 0.32 acres, that's 1.3, is it just a decimal?
No, it's 0.13 hectares.
Oh, yeah, 0.13.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we don't want to get caught on that again. Okay, so just a quick show of hands, a resolution to come back at the next, next meeting to declare surplus? Yes, okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on from there, and the process will begin. Okay, that's not it for general government. So it's my point, too, we have a ward boundary adjustment. I will pass that again to Madam Clerk for an update. And there is a good package. I see several cases that were at the meeting, the public consultation meeting. And I will say that ward boundaries are so interesting that there were actually more members of counsel in attendance than there were members of the public. So in fact, I will pass the floor to Madam Clerk for an update on the process and where we're at.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report document, which I cannot find, is in here. Yes, it is. So the counsel had given direction earlier on in the year that they were interested in undertaking some minor adjustments to the municipal wards to correct some potential geographic anomalies to... We had a couple of wards that were divided by a municipal road where people on one side were in one ward and people on the other side were in a different ward. Counsel had determined that they wanted to take a look at these things. So we did do some discussions here at counsel, and counsel did provide direction to staff with regard to those adjustments. We prepared a public consultation information, and notices were mailed out to all of the residents of West Nipissing in the final tax billing to advise them of what was being proposed, as well as to inform them of the date and time of the public meeting that was going to be undertaken. The meeting was held on the 9th, 10th, like the 10th of July, Thursday night after the last council meeting. As the mayor said, there were more council members in attendance than members of the public. However, we did livestream it, and we have had significant viewing by the public of the, of the meeting. So, you know, we had very few inquiries. The few inquiries that we did get were largely just people asking were they affected or not by this. The, we did actually receive, in the package, I'll address, there was one suggestion that was brought at the public meeting by Counselor Pellerin, which was with respect to the potential of splitting a portion of Ward 8 off and adding it to the...
Don't say Ward 2.
Wards 1 and 2, actually, was the question. I don't know why my report...
We're trying to get Counselor St. Louis to ask.
Well, and that is one of the reasons, and I'm trying to figure out, is my report not in? Oh, my goodness. There was a comprehensive report which did not get...
Do you know why I put the report in? Because we continue with your...
Yes, I'll continue.
Include the report in the agenda package for September 2nd because that's when it will come back for...
Yes, but I will, I will address, and I did comprehensively address the... There was a question by Counselor Pellerin with respect to adding a portion of the islands which are located in Lake Nipissing that are geographically closer to Wards 1 and 2, potentially removing them from the, from his, from Ward 8. That, having gone through the research, that would not meet the criterias. It would be not supported by the generally accepted principles of ward boundaries because it would be splitting up a community. The French River community is fairly, is fairly tight. They have a very active cottagers' association despite the fact that they are quite... And that cottagers' association is also belong, people who live on the mainland also belong to it as well as people who live on islands. In addition, they are all within the township of Bertram, which is part of that particular ward. So I wouldn't recommend breaking that out. It would also be problematic because the, part of the purpose of this was to reduce the size of Ward 2, and by adding that, we would be adding back as many people as we moved into Ward 1 with the other... He'd have the same amount of people. So that is not something I would be recommending. We did, however, receive a letter today from the Muscaton Lake Cottagers Association, and they had a request which, currently, the dividing line between Wards 5 and 6, and there's a copy of it on your desk, Wards 5 and 6 runs directly through the middle of Lake Muscaton. And there are 10 residents that are located at the east end of the lake who are located in Ward 5, and the other 27 residents are located in Ward 6. They are requesting to have their entire cottagers' association all in one ward, so they, when they have concerns, they know, they can take it as a group to the ward. There is no other patented land around that lake. It's all crowned. And those property owners would be the only ones affected by that change. Of the 10 residents that are there, only seven of the properties have eligible electors. The other three are corporately owned. So shifting that line where that yellow box is on your, would be minimal, have minimal impact on either ward, but would put all of the residents of Muscaton all in one ward, which would be...
Communities of interest.
Yeah, communities of interest. Yeah, communities of interest, put them all into Ward Six. And that would meet the, the criterias.
Just got ten more houses. Any question, uh, uh, sorry, are there any other?
No, that was, that was, that was pretty well it, uh, except for the, um, just to outline what the next steps would be and that would be if council is, uh, generally, um, uh, in agreement with what is being proposed and the recommendations that we would next, the next item would be to prepare a bylaw, uh, for adoption by council, uh, setting out all of the changes, um, and then to, uh, there is a, an appeal period that follows that, uh, forty-five days appeal period, uh, following which the, the bylaw would become, uh, in effect and we would begin making the necessary, uh, adjustments to the wards, uh, through municipal property assessment corporation.
Questions or comments? All right, Council Restool?
Thank you, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, just, I appreciate the update, uh, on the questions about the island properties. I was there, uh, for the presentation in, uh, council chambers and I, our, um, Mr. Charm did a great job with the overview and the presentation. Uh, I, I'd probably, I'd like to support, uh, the issue with Muscaton too, if we're opening this up to kind of clean things up. I think it makes sense to have them all within the same, uh, ward as well instead of, uh, having half and, or one-third and two-thirds. And, uh, just wanted to mention too, I'm, I have my, my online package here that I'm using and it does have your presentation that you presented that evening and it also has the report following that with the concerns that were raised. So it is, it is online.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Restool, uh, Council Larrabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, uh, I didn't notice on the report that they did send, uh, the Muscaton Lake Association, or, organization.
Oh, it just came in today.
Yeah, I know, and, but they didn't say on there that which ward they would prefer to be in, did, or just saying, uh, what I know is they want to be either one or the other.
Yeah, they just want to be in one or the other and based on the numbers, it makes more sense to move the, the lower number to where the higher number already is located.
Perfect.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so, um, now the official comment period is open until Friday. Um, so there is a, a possibility that there still could be additional last-minute comments received by the public. Uh, but based on the information, uh, that we have here, uh, the public consultation meeting and the feedback that's been received so far is council, um, uh, agree with the, the general view of the changes that are being proposed? And what will happen is that, will the bylaw come back next meeting on the second?
It can come back, uh, it could come back the second meeting of September and I can bring that just sort of a final layout of the documents.
A list of, like an actual list of comments just to show which, what was received even if it was just the changes.
And I can also bring that, the, the final map as it will look, um, so that, and have before council brings it as a bylaw.
And so if there are any additional comments between now and Friday, those will be presented at the twentieth and we could make minor adjustments on the twentieth as amendments to the bylaw.
That's correct.
So basically, if there is any other additional feedback. So are we good at, with moving forward at this point or just, uh, is that a pre-vote, Jamie? Okay, uh, and so, uh, at the September twentieth meeting, uh, we'll come back with, uh, with the bylaw, updated maps and any, uh, additional, uh, comments, uh, that should be considered before we vote. Good? On the twen- uh, not, I keep saying the, I don't know why, it's the sixteenth, September sixteenth meeting, I want it to be September twentieth. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, six point one point three, Doki's Reserve Road. This is an agenda, uh, request item, uh, that I put in. I just wanted to provide council with an update, um, as far as, um, meeting that was held between ourselves, uh, myself and Mr. Barbo, uh, the mayor of the river and their C A O and Chief Jerry Pickett, uh, from Doki's First Nation and some of their municipal staff back in, mm, May, I believe it was. Um, and at that time we had, well, you can see, I think what I wrote in my agenda request is very explanatory. So, um, you know, at that time we did, uh, talk about the church, uh, potential, uh, of a road transfer strategy to help address some of the, uh, both the issues for Doki's First Nation as far as, um, access in and out of their, uh, their territory, um, as well as some of the challenges that we have from a public works perspective. And so what I would like at this point is, uh, is if council is okay, um, I'd just like to have your okay before asking staff to prepare an actual report uh, that outlines what a potential roads, uh, transfer strategy may look like, what are the pros and cons and, and how it would, how, how it could be, uh, negotiated. So I just, I didn't want staff to start working on stuff without the okay of all of council. So I'll open the floor to questions, comments on the Doki's Road. Okay, oh, I, thank you, Council Restool?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, I, I did have, um, you know, some discussions, very, not anything specis, you know, in particular, but just generally, I think it's, I'd be supportive of this. I know it's been an issue, uh, that's been here since the last time I was on council and it, if we can, you know, kind of put this, uh, to bed with every, all the different communities involved to everybody's satisfaction, I think it would be, uh, very good moving forward. I know, uh, all the communities get questions during the, uh, usually spring, you know, spring, fall, winter months about the road and if we can work on a strategy, I think that would be very beneficial to everybody involved. So I definitely support, uh, starting the work on a, on a potential, uh, transfer strategy.
Thank you. Yeah, July and August are about the only quiet ones. So, um, other questions or comments? Okay, so, uh, again, I'll, uh, uh, I don't know whether Mr. Barbo would want that as a resolution directing staff to, you believe so? Okay, so, uh, at the next meeting, September second, a resolution will be on, uh, just directing staff to prepare a report on a potential, uh, transfer strategy for Doki's Road, uh, with council's approval. Thank you. Take your mic down here. Oh, no. Okay, item six point one point four, uh, West Nipissing Accessibility Plan. Again, this was one of my agenda items, not only because we are approaching the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, so if there is a staff report there in regards to the accessibility plan, uh, we are required as municipality with a population of over ten thousand, um, to have an accessibility plan and to update it every five years. We don't usually take questions from the gallery. How can I help you?
Well, I was just, uh, asking if we could kindly move up to, uh, section seven point forty because it looks like we're going to be here forever and I think most of the people are here to address that section.
Well, our, our agendas are set ahead of time and we do take the agenda, like, we have a procedural bylaw. We take the agenda items in the order that they.
I, I know, but it's like, do you value, like, I'm just here to discuss that issue and act, I have no idea what's going to happen today. I just have a few questions and I have kids that I need to get back to.
Unfortunately, we, we move through the agenda as it's presented. That's the way we do council business and when the item comes up, um, it is not open for discussion with the public. In order to delegate to council, you do have to apply for delegation in advance. So there is, there is a resolution on the agenda that will be read and will be voted on when we get to.
Right, but we will have a chance to speak with you?
No.
No?
No.
Why not?
Because that's not how the council works.
Well, who does the council work for?
Okay, moving on, thank you. Um, so the accessibility plan, um.
So this was actually, as the mayor said, it was her agenda request, but it's actually, um, it's timely, it's good for this council having this council not been involved with the planning process before. I mean, haven't talked a lot about accessibility at the, the table. So as the mayor said, we're, um, renewing the accessibility plan this year. It is a requirement for municipalities our, our size. I know I attached a lot of documentation for you to, to read through, um, with, with it. So the, the accessibility plan, um, covers some of the, the kind of, um, statements on philosophy and on policies we have and, 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 you know, that municipality works with the, the commitment and the legislation that we're under. The part that, that, um, is interested to, to most folks and to the accessibility committee and council is sort of that, that list of objectives that are, are going on now. In the past, we've done a lot of, um, sort of back and forth with the committee and our, our facilities folks. Over the course of, from when, when we put this accessibility plan into where we are now, we've actually managed to finish all of our facility assessments at our, our main facilities. So we actually had a much better, uh, sort of plan on tackling the, the accessibility projects and on what state our facilities are, are in. And so you'll see sort of attachments at the end there, the, um, the maintenance projects that have come through and then the, the next one is, is the barriers assessment, which is what the committee has been working with and Mr. Belonge has been taking that report back to the, the committees. And he's actually, he did it last fall, so he has one to take back this fall. And this then forms the base of what are the targets for the next five years, um, from the, from the municipality. And so that ties into some of our, our long-term capital planning and all those other pieces that, that come along. You'll see within the, the plan that there is also an internal committee, that, so there's an accessibility committee that is, uh, members of the public. There's an internal committee and the internal committee means just to ensure that as capital plans get approved, that accessibility is, is considered, then as, as they, as we hit the next planning stage, that accessibility is considered because accessibility impacts not just our facilities, but it impacts when we're redoing sidewalks and parking on the side of Corseal and, and all those things. So we need to make sure that, that all the departments are, are, are looking at the, uh, at the. Uh, with the plan, you know, a lot of the, the first part, we're not going to see a lot of update to the, the, the update will come in all those, those projects that, that go through. Included in the package is the current terms of reference for the accessibility advisory committee. Though these terms of reference are dated, I think twenty twenty-two, I'm not sure they've actually been updated. And so like all of our, our committees and our policies, it's one of the ones we probably want to take a look at at some point and see what the, the terms of reference are, um, with the, with the committee. The committee structure as far as, um, you know, persons of accessibility and members of the committee is part of the legislation and how it, how it rolls. And then the last piece that I, I did provide to, to council and, and is just that excerpt from the, um, regulations and that just shows the overview of all the things that are included and all the check boxes that we have to do as far as looking at accessibility. But, um, yeah, you will see and, and, uh, plan, a draft plan will go to the accessibility committee that will work with accessibility committee on that, those goals for the next five years as far as, uh, projects and proposals and then it will come back to council for review.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments on that item? All right, Council Perrin?
I know there's a long list to do. Somebody shot me that idea last winter and I'd just like to throw it out, out there. All the people that works in the arena in the wintertime, in the summertime, they're, they go around cutting grass and stuff like this. When I was, when I was told, I think it's a good idea to maybe make a, I have a, a team of three, four people just dedicated on repairs. There's lots of things we can do ourselves. And for example, let's say like the, the two little earnings that we live in Burner. Stuff like this could have been done by people like this and then subcontract or hire lower paid people to cut the grass and stuff like this. Just, I'd just like to throw that idea out, out there and something to take out. That's it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, so a- as this is a requirement, our legislation staff is going to work on it and as, uh, Ms. Craddock indicated, it will come, uh, back to council after a draft has been reviewed by the accessibility advisory committee and we'll have a dis- uh, discussion on it at that point. And, uh, with that, uh, we are finished with general government. Uh, six point two, we'll move on to emergency measures and public safety and for that, I'll pass the floor to our Chair, Council Larrabee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On six point two, emergency measures and public safety, we have two items. The first one is six point two point one, uh, the delegation discussing from the July eighth, twenty twenty-five public safety and business impact in the downtown, downtown core. That was presented by Kim Peller. And who would, uh, uh, who would I pass this on to?
Well, I think it's just, if, if council has any discussion, I, we did have a, a good discussion actually at that time, but if there's any further discussion, I think you would just, Chair, if there's any outcome that you want to direct staff for, then, you know.
Okay, thank you. So any comments or questions from our last, uh, meeting that we had? Because the downtown core businesses wanted to have the, uh, they use the food bank or the soup kitchen move to, uh, more secluded areas so it would, they would not impact the businesses in the downtown core. So, uh, now it's our choice to leave it where it is or move it in another area. So if there is other area available.
It, it is, sorry, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, uh, at the end of the day, the, uh, organization that's providing services, uh, in the downtown core, um, lease, uh, a facility, uh, from a land. Um, you know, we, we do not have, uh, anything in our, that, that says who can rent to who as far as, uh, properties are concerned there, so I, it's.
Okay, so I do apologize, I didn't know, I didn't know that it was a private rented area. So if that's the case, is there any other solution that we could tackle this problem that the business do have? And it's legitimate, it's very legitimate, uh, even there's a business that wanted to move out of the downtown core because of the activity of the drugs just next door. So it's, it's not pleasant. So if there's anything that we could do to help out the business, I think, uh, like, we can't move them out, but if there's anything that comes up, we would, uh, I think council should, should.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I, I'm just going to reiterate something I said, uh, at the time with the, at the, at the delegation. Uh, you know, I, nobody, I think here is going to deny that we have, um, a homelessness problem. We do. But I cannot accept that there's a direct cause and effect between the soup kitchen and the problems we have downtown. It's not, the problems we have downtown with drugs, it's not, is not all related to homelessness, first of all. And even if the, uh, soup kitchen were to move, say, next to the hospital, it doesn't mean that suddenly that set of problems, whether it's caused by homelessness or drug addict or is, is suddenly going to move to the hospital and nothing's up. Usually, these people hang around in down, in the downtown core. Homeless people used to tend, they tend to hang around in the downtown core. Drug activity is probably going to be centered in the downtown core. I can't see what moving the soup kitchen will have anything to do with changing that problem.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Restool?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, thoughts on it, I, I agree with, uh, Council Perrin. I think there's other reasons besides the services provided, uh, through the soup kitchen, why there's individuals in the downtown core. I, I'd have a hard time believing that if we move it, the, uh, one, that the problem would stop. Uh, two, that the individuals would start hanging out more in residential areas because I don't think that's something. But I think that in, you know, over the last couple of years, we've seen growth, uh, with no more tiers and the work that they do within the community. Uh, we've seen more outreach from some of the services, uh, provided through D S A P within our community and there's always room for growth. within our community, and there's always room for growth, that's for sure. But I think this might be an opportunity uh to work with those organizations maybe a little bit more closer or to bring concerns to them based on what we're hearing from business owners and see if there's opportunities to develop or maybe reinforce some strategies on how we uh can work with them to help this issue and, and to help those individuals who are involved in this kind of activity. It's, it's, it's not easy. I've said this and, and I'll do use the reiterating just as Councilor Fedan did as well. We didn't see this type of uh challenge within our community, you know, four or five years ago. It, it is something that's emerging and it's not a West Nipissing issue. You can see it in communities across, uh, across Canada. But if we can work with partnership to try and improve the situation, improve the uh, the downtown core, I think that's, that's probably going to be more effective than saying, let's take the service that an organization is providing that's central and put it out in who knows where because that'll help things get better. Because I don't think it will. I think the individuals like Councilor Fedan mentioned are in the downtown core for other reasons as well. So, and, and another piece that I always come back to is we pay for uh law enforcement within our community. We pay that to the OPP. This is my little piece I'll throw in, but we've, we've seen an increase in the rates that we pay to the OPP in this past year, and their job is law enforcement. And if we see that there's more or increasing issues within, then it should be part of this. Responsibilities should lay uh with them as well to include, include, increase uh patrols or increase supports for community businesses for law enforcement if it is drug-related issues. There's a, there's a place at the table uh for increased supports from that group as well. So I'll just uh leave it at that. I think there's strategies we need to work on rather than just picking up a business and moving it down the road because it'll make it easier for the downtown core. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilor Ristol. Very well said. If there's anything we could do to uh, to work with committees, then I'll do. We need, we need to move on, on it with the, the locals and also the uh provincial government, which we're going to AMO. They are, they usually have a discussion this, this matter. Maybe we could consult with uh colleagues in, at AMO, see what they, their solution come up with. So any other comments or questions? With this, then I'll close this, item up, and we'll move on to uh six point two point two, the Tamiko Fire Hall, follow-up from the public consultation.
I, I can take that. Thank you, Councilor Larabee. Um, and actually, I don't have a lot to say. You, you have a memo from the fire chief in your package. And you'll recall that the fire chief actually brought the discussion uh quite the beginning of the year just to discuss the, the closure of the Tamiko Fire Hall. And at that point, uh council, um, there was a, a delegation from the public. The council suggested that we actually go out and, and have a, a meeting with the affected residents and have just a bit of an, an open house. And then whether being the way it was, it took us a few of a while to get it because it seemed to always be an ice storm whenever we were about to have it. So it did take us a little while to get out there for the information session. So the information session was, was held. Uh, the, the fire chief, um, you know, spoke with residents and sort of, you know, explained how emergency services was going to continue to be provided, uh, what had been provided from the, the garage before. Um, and so now I was just coming back to, to council for the discussion on the, the closure of the, the, the building as a fire hall. I understand that at the um public consultation, there was also a bit of talk about what the building could be used for. That's a later discussion. Right now, we're just looking for whether council um does support uh closing it as a fire hall.
Thank you. I'll kind of close up. CAO. So uh, we did, uh, we did attend Councilor Katie, Nicole, and our mayor. We did go at the uh Crystal Falls Fire Station and we heard the concern of the resident. For most part, the resident understood very well what was going on. And they, they understand that a, a three-quarter ton pickup truck with a gas pump in the back in the box is not a fire station, and they figured that was a fire station. So anyways, they, they were, they were in agreement. They're not losing services because the uh, the Tamiko, uh, not the Tamiko, uh, the Crystal Falls will provide them service with Station One, which they always do. So they're, they're in the same position that they were. Hopefully, the bridge doesn't collapse between here and there and those small roads. That would be a concern. Besides that, there would be no concern to it. So uh now the discussion is, do we, are we in agreement to finalize this station, to close it? Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Larabee. I guess we've got no choice. It's just housing a, a truck in a water park. Accomplished with that. I'm just curious, did, I, I missed that meeting. There, was there any discussion on how it's going to affect the people's insurance? Or do they know about it? Just curious.
You won't make that to that because I was there. So uh, the chief did explain um at that time that there, you know, through insurance companies, to be rated a fire station for the purposes of your insurance. Uh, there has to be ten members and a ten.
Actually, two, uh, two people, but I need to point out.
Yeah, so there, there are certain requirements um under the underwriters for insurance for a fire station to be considered a fire station for, for the sake of insurance. And the Tamiko Fire Station did not meet those um requirements for residents. They, who perhaps have misinformed of their insurance. Generally, the insurances will check themselves. So because uh, so you know, there, it was very clear that it already is not considered a fire station as far as insurance purposes are concerned. We do have other fire stations um within uh our assets that would also not meet that threshold, uh, including, I believe, North Manetteville doesn't meet the threshold for uh the number of volunteers. And then we know Cash Bay doesn't because Cash Bay generally answers all the searching calls now. So, you know, that was made clear to the residents at that time.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Dragic, but any other?
As you said, I know, I know what you mean. Just, I'm sure there was quite a few of them inserted under the thought that they were covered by, I'm sure. So as long as they know, expect. My second comment, I mentioned it at the last meeting we had around here. When we had our lodge on Lake Nipissing, I remember uh Burner giving us uh a water pump and some fire hose. And this was dedicated for anybody on an island that had a fire. They knew to come to the island and get it. And this affected our insurance and improved, it was good for us and other people. I don't know if this is something to suggest to them, uh, that they talk to their insurance.
If you want to handle it.
Hey, go ahead. Thank you.
So during that meeting as well, um, the chief did uh offer uh the services of our fire station to the residents in, in order to develop um kind of individual um response plans. So to, to how, basically training the residents how to be more fire safe, more fire aware. You know, uh, purchasing uh pumps or maybe collaboratively purchasing uh pumps and, and stuff like that. So um, there was information given to residents at that time that uh, the chief and the, and the fire department, including our fire safety officers, uh, would make themselves uh available to, uh, offer services to help the residents uh feel more prepared. Um, although, you know, saying that there has not been volunteers at Tamiko, there are not, has not been fire response out of the Tamiko um hall for, for several years now. So in many ways, the service level isn't actually, the actual service level we're providing is not changing.
And also, also to, there was before coming to us with this, of the disclosure, there was one fireman, and he brought in his folks a few months ago. There's no, no longer any fire person interested in it. And it's not, it's not something that could say, well, okay, you're interested, you're interested. Come on, you're going to be, you're a fireman. They need so much training before they could wear that, that bunker suit then. It's, it's impossible.
No, I, I'm sure, I'm, I'm just saying what we went through.
Yeah.
That would improve their cost on the entrance. As long as they know about it, they can ask the insurance, okay, if we do this and that and that. Is it better? Does it help? It did at the time for us thirty years ago.
Thank you. Councilor Nichols.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add for Councilor Keller, they did record it and upload it, and there's a lot of good resident questions. And the chief provided a lot of information. He told them where to get pumps, he said he would come do a training. So if you get a chance and want to watch it, might answer some of your questions.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Nichols. Any other comments or questions? Well, with this, would you like to have a show of hands of who's in favor of terminating this, this site as a fire's? Thank you. Pass.
Okay, so that will uh come back as a resolution at our next meeting of council. With that, I'll take a mover and a seconder for recess, please. Like Councilor Rebar, Councilor Nichol.
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Nichol. At approximately eight p.m., a motion was tabled for a ten-minute recess.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Carrie, thank you. So that will come back as a resolution at our next council. With that, I'll take a mover and a seconder for recess, please. By Counselor Robard, Counselor Nichols.
It is moved by Counselor Robard and seconded by Counselor Nichols. At approximately eight p.m., a motion was tabled for a ten-minute recess.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So that's a question. The report, like I said, is largely a historical document just to provide counsel with the background information.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mr. Flynn, did you want to add anything before I start? Questions or?
If I may.
Just give him a chance.
Some of your questions. So I guess if you, if we look at both items under EGDEV, they're kind of intertwined. Because with the expansion of the road on, in our industrial park, there could potentially be a funding opportunity, which is the Rural Ontario Development Program that the province announced recently. It would meet the eligibility criteria. We could get up to thirty-five percent of the cost of, of the road construction. We're estimating the road construction cost if we were to build the entire remaining portion of the road that would go back onto LeBlanc Road at four hundred fifty thousand. That would still leave the municipality, if we were successful in obtaining financing or a grant, it would still leave us with, my math's correct, three hundred twenty-five thousand to pay for that, our portion. Now, again, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if we want to take questions specifically on this. And then we can address the finance, the potential options for a grant. Because there are strict timelines associated to it. It might, or it might not work our timelines or our options. But I leave it to you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I think, to begin, I think my fellow councils probably have some questions or comments.
Absolutely.
About the development. I may have a couple myself, so we'll start with Madam Mayor.
Yeah, just help us to get a little better understanding of the background and the context. So my first question is in regards to the properties that are already privately owned, whether or not they're developed. So we have that first block which says Block Seventeen on it. This not part of this plan?
That was the, in the report, that was the very first lot that was sold.
Individually?
Individually, at the very beginning, before the idea of going to the subdivision. So that was the very first lot, and it is developed.
So it is that lot plus what's marked as Lot One, Two, Three, Four, and Lot Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, and Sixteen are all currently privately owned?
That's correct, yes. So One, Two, Three, yeah.
One, Two, Three, Four, then Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen? Like, is it straight across?
No, just to Thirteen.
To Thirteen, so Twelve is not sold?
The eight lots, there's eight lots sold. Or eight lots.
Lot Twelve is not sold yet?
No, Lot Twelve is still, we still own Lot Twelve.
Initially, we, we own Twelve, Eleven, Ten, Nine, Eight, Seven, Sixteen.
Four.
And four, okay. And do we own any other land surrounding this property? So the property on the east side of LeBlanc Road is privately owned?
There's, this is the entirety of what we own.
Of what we own, this is the entire holding, okay. That's great. And the only other comment I'll make just for counsel is that the report that is mentioned in here for the servicing feasibility study is available on the municipal website underneath the Economic Development tab under Plans and Studies. And it is, it is a fascinating read.
Exactly.
So, but it is, it is all there, and it does go, the pricing would be, of course, out of date, but the, the different concepts for how to get from A to B on making this a feasible industrial plan or industrial park is all there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Counselor Keller. So One to Eight have access on LeBlanc Road?
Yes.
And you see which?
Through you, the intention was that they would all access off of the interior road. You'll see there's a small foot, foot reserve running along LeBlanc Road. The intention was that they would all front on the, on the road to be built, not have access directly off of LeBlanc. But that would be a council decision. The council of the day wanted them to enter off of the interior road. And so the conceptual plan was set up with that reserve along LeBlanc.
So technically, One to Eight have access to LeBlanc Road. Which, which one at the back are, are sold, Thirteen to Sixteen?
Yes, the Block Seventeen, Lots One, Two, Three, and Lots Sixteen, Fifteen, Fourteen, and Thirteen. No, I'm sorry, Thirteen's still ours. Hang on.
But you said eight.
Hang on, eight.
Thirteen is ours.
Four, 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 yes. We still own. We still own Twelve.
So technically, there's just Nine till Thirteen. That would. That the costs associated, if we, if we.
No, Four, Five, Six, and Seven would also.
No, no, but technically, I'm talking if we had direct access to LeBlanc Road. Just put a cover it and you're on the dial. If we decided to do it. Right? So the only few lots, let's see for argument's sake, for the, to save money. Four lots left for that amount of money to spend on that new road.
Mr. Chair, can I just respond to that? Because I think I have some important information. The thing about what I'm saying there is that LeBlanc Road was never built to a standard to accommodate industrial traffic, so heavy vehicles. After Bay Road, traditionally after Bay Road, there's always been a load restriction. It's, it's been a load restricted road from, on LeBlanc from Bay Road South. And so, while technically true that they could have access off of LeBlanc Road, it would actually require, and Ms. Henning will tell me if I'm correct, but it would require some upgrades to LeBlanc Road to make it amenable for the heavy traffic. So the, the concept of everybody coming in from the interior road is that you build that one interior road to the standard to handle heavier industrial traffic instead of having to do both the upgrades on Bay Road and also having to build a road to the same standard on the interior. So that's why the concept of having it all accessed from the middle was developed is because LeBlanc Road is, and I believe that that is actually mentioned within that feasibility study that LeBlanc Road is not to a standard to, to manage industrial traffic.
Mr. Chair, if I may through you.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so the interior road that goes through our industrial land is called Industrial Road. No, none of these lots have direct access to LeBlanc Road, none of them. And it was never the intent. The intent is to come in off Bay, but now anyone going in off Bay is cul-de-sac, they have to revert, turn around, and so do our plows. So what we're proposing is to continue Industrial Road so that once it's all developed, we can market these lots. And traffic comes in from Bay and leaves from LeBlanc. So we're not talking about any road construction on LeBlanc right now except for an entrance. And it's just basically to finish Industrial Road to be able to actually market these additional lots that we have that are zoned industrial unserviced. Right now, we've been approached by two companies. I think one is way more development-ready than the other. So how I see it is we have, council has options. One is to, you know, budget, complete the road, which is estimated at four fifty, and have it completed and done, sell one lot, potentially two, and then market the rest and recoup some of the cost as we sell the land. Option two is do nothing and maybe accommodate one of the companies that has recently approached our clerk to see if they're willing to, if there's enough land on Lot Number Twelve, I think you said, we still own, and, and allow them to move there. And option three is apply for funding, and if successful, we get thirty-five percent. And then council could potentially budget for 2026 to get this done.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. The question is, do we need to build that road to a standard that would not require half-load in the spring? Or a company move in? Or, because before, LeBlanc was not, was restricted to half-load. And then with, with the company that moved in to Circle Building, we, we did improve the road to no, not half-load restriction from Highway Seventeen onto LeBlanc and onto Eight to Circle Building. So do this road, we need to build it at that standard?
But all of our roads, if I'm not mistaken?
All of our roads go under half-load, all of our gravel roads.
Gravel road?
Gravel road.
And this would still be a gravel road? Okay, that was my question.
LeBlanc is not gravel.
The interior road, industrial road would be, yes. The road we're talking about building would be gravel.
But LeBlanc, even though it's not gravel, is still half-load after the entrance to Deep?
Yes.
Yes.
What other question, if I may? Is the company interested in a low, a road to, to move their business, whatever, in a place where there's going to be a load restriction on the road in the spring time?
We'd have to ask that question, but I do believe they're aware, yeah. But we'd have to specifically ask that question to them, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask you? You said that all the entrances are on the interior room. Entrances on the.
Off Bay Road.
They're, as, as.
They appear to have an entrance, I'm just looking at Google Maps. They appear to have an entrance, I may be mistaken, but they appear to have an entrance on the.
As, as I had indicated in my preamble, that particular lot was sold. As a one-off before the intention of the subdivision was fleshed out. And, and, and they were given an entrance at that point because the road was not there.
So is Deep entirely on Block Seventeen, on that first one, not Lot One?
No.
No, okay. The way it's shaped in reality, I think is, because it looks like Deep is on Lot Seventeen and Lot One. If I'm looking at a map.
I, I can't speak to any. The Lot One is not, is not owned by them. I don't know whether or not the owner has leased any property to them. I, I can't speak to that, I don't know.
I think it's quite probable, because if you look at the shape, it's a rectangle, Block Seventeen is a rectangle. There's one rectangle which has three buildings on it, and then the next one is another rectangle with another building on it and more vehicle parking. So there may be an arrangement between the owner of Lot One.
We have no knowledge.
Quite likely, yeah.
Okay, okay. And how much, do we know how much each of these lots? I think it was in the.
In, through you, you are the chair. The initial appraisal that we got back in at the beginning was that it was a thousand dollars an acre. So lots were going for five thousand dollars. We got it appraised twice at the same price. And then back in, I think, 2019, we got a third opinion of value where the, the price actually went up.
Any more questions or comments? Counselor Keller.
Thank you, just so unclear. The half-load goes up. LeBlanc Road to the corner of Bay Street. So if we build that crescent, half-load's going to extend to the, to the, to the end of the road? To the end of the.
We have half-loads on all of our gravel.
Is so is Deep entirely on block seventeen, on that first one, not lot one?
No.
No, okay. Um, the way it's shaped in reality, I think is because it looks like Deep is on block seventeen and lot one. If I'm looking at a map.
If, I I can't speak to any. The lot one is not um is not owned by them. I don't know whether or not the owner has leased any property to them. I I can't speak to that, I don't know.
I think it's quite probable because if you look at the shape, it's a rectangle. Block seventeen is a rectangle. There's one rectangle which has three buildings on it, and then the next one is another rectangle with another building on it and more vehicle parking.
It may be.
So there may be an arrangement between the owner of lot one.
I we have no knowledge.
Quite likely, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, and how much, do we know how much each of these lots? I think it was in the.
In um through you, uh you are the chair. Um, the initial appraisal that we got back in at the beginning was that it was a thousand dollars an acre, so lots were going for five thousand dollars. Um, we got it appraised twice at the same price, and then back in, I think, twenty nineteen, uh we got a third uh paying of value where the the price actually went up.
Any more questions or comments? Counselor Carrery. Thank you, just so unclear. The half-load goes up uh LeBlanc Road to the corner of Bay Street. So if we build that crescent, half-load's going to extend to the to the, to the end of the road, to the end of the.
We have half-loads on all of our gravel roads, and that's not.
No, it's paint road.
On LeBlanc.
On LeBlanc.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's uh is also under half-load, like our half-load bylaw covers all of our roads.
Or vehicles leaving the industrial park could leave going back through Bay, Bay Road, Bay Street or Bay Road.
Okay.
Or 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 we could extend the half-load to the entrance of our industrial park.
So LeBlanc is not, doesn't have a half-load?
It does. Beyond Bay Road.
But it's paved to although it's seventeen, right?
But beyond Bay Road?
Okay.
Half-load. But not to the highway.
Okay, so that's why I'm saying if we build that, then at the end of the crescent, uh to the mayor's point.
Yeah.
Then it's not, then the the highway is not built to that standard. The road's not built to that standard.
We can extend the half-load from here to here. Once this is built up. Yeah, like, so one option would be to upgrade that portion of the road to accommodate or have vehicles leave the industrial park through Bay Street or Bay Road. During the half-load period.
Just uh just another comment, Mister Carrer. How do we uh, how do we recuperate our our money at the a thousand bucks an acre? And if we have to re-upgrade that stretch of LeBlanc Road?
It's no longer a dollar an acre. That was when they initially, what, ten, ten years ago, I guess, when we sold? Now, the the last ones we sold were how much?
I think my mind serves me as about twenty-three hundred dollars um per acre at that time.
Plus the cost of the road that spans their frontage.
They they paid on the previous sales. The last four lots, the first four lots were sold and the owner, the buyer was all the same person. The first three lots beyond, except for block seventeen, were all the same person that bought lots, uh fifteen, fourteen, and one was the same person. They paid for the first bit of the road. When we decided to do the next portion of the road, what we did was we we paid for the extension, uh which leads to approximately the sea in Crescent, and we apportioned the cost of it back to the sales of the next three lots. So they paid the thousand dollars an acre plus the proportionate share of the road construction.
Can I ask you then, sorry, um, can I ask you? So are you saying that we could recover all or part of the investment from the sale of the land by adding the cost of the road extension?
Uh council, there is a legislation in the municipal act, it's called local improvement. Council always has the uh ability to uh recoup um investment in infrastructure from the landowners uh by adopting what's called a local improvement bylaw. And uh it has been done in West Nipissing a few times, um although it was mentioned, we certainly couldn't um get back the grant money. Uh the grant money would have to be excluded from any local improvement that was levied. It is uh it is one vehicle uh that has been used a few times in the past, I think, to uh use it there.
Yeah, so there are there are options, whether you do the local improvement or it just changes your value of your your assets so that you know that your minimum, you know, tender is going to be. Then the discussion becomes if we've got twelve lots left to to go, you know, is it at a reasonable value to be adding to the lots and still be able to sell them?
Does it remain competitive?
Yeah.
Competitive is the question.
Just come to say. Um, thank you through you, Mister Chair. So I've been listening, and my thought process on this is, this is economic development, and we're talking about bringing businesses and companies to West Nipissing to grow West Nipissing, to bring jobs to West Nipissing. And now we're thinking and arguing for a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars. Let's think of the growth that that's going to bring to our municipality. If we can get thirty-five percent and recoup it that way, and then we sell the lots at, I think I saw two thousand, twenty-five hundred per acre, and it's five-acre lots, is that what it is? So you're looking at ten thousand, and if we've got ten, well, that's another two hundred and fifty thousand. My maths is not the best. If at the end of the day it costs us a hundred thousand dollars and we have to put a sign at the end of the street that, no, you don't go on the LeBlanc because we're not going to redo that road, you have to come out during half-load and go back to Bay Road. If it means bringing businesses to West Nipissing, I think a hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand is a drop in the bucket if we're able to do it, right? Get, don't get me wrong, I understand right now there's only two businesses or interests and whatnot, but if we are able to do that, then I see nothing wrong with moving forward with, at the very least, looking into this and getting this done. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, I just want to point out.
We're actually not arguing over.
No, 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 and I'm not.
Counselor, just asking questions and.
And I understand, and it's not an argument, but I, that's just my thought process.
Mayor.
Um, I mean, I think at this point staff is is trying to determine whether or not to uh put together the road application for uh this specific project. Um, and I would be in favor of it because if we get the funding and then at that, then they would, then staff would come back with actually a more detailed financial analysis of what the cost would be, what that would look like spread over a number of potential lots for sale. Uh and, you know, we could also look at um chasing a little bit of money uh from the federal government that, you know, that does have a tendency uh to step up once there are kind of provincial funds um secured on a project. So, you know, they may not match, but maybe we get another ten percent or fifteen percent of the project um off federal, but we we won't know until uh we put in the grant application and see if we're successful. And if the grant application comes back as successful, then we can take a closer, that's my opinion, then we can take a closer look at the numbers and what it means and how to make it work so that uh it it limits the overall cost to municipality while uh making, you know, giving the benefit of these additional. So I would be at this point in favor of asking staff to.
Well, I was going to suggest that we move on to the next item.
Yeah.
Which is, which is interlinked, so uh unless there's any specific questions about the program, can we do that, and then we can discuss both in conjunction? Um, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you want to speak about?
Can I just add one thing, Mister Chair? Um, just to clarify the question that was asked in twenty nineteen when they redid uh LeBlanc Road. It was already planned, and when they paved LeBlanc Road, a hundred-meter portion beyond Bay Street going north was paved at uh standards to accommodate industrial traffic. So that was already thought of. This was prior to Miss Henning being with us. And so uh if we were to uh build out the road and come off LeBlanc, that portion from bay to the entrance to our industrial park would not be affected by half-load because it was built to a standard to accommodate industrial traffic. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so now moving on to the Rural Ontario Development Program. Um, Province announced it in July. Um, application deadline is September twenty-fourth. Uh, the province has created this Rural Ontario program. They call it the Community Development Stream. It's basically focused on economic development projects. Um, they uh they have four intakes for applications, the first being now. Um, second intake has an application deadline. We'll we'll go from January nineteenth to February twenty-sixth. Intake three goes from August seventeenth to October one. And the fourth intake is uh January eighteenth, um February twenty-fifth, twenty-five of twenty twenty-seven. Um. Like I I mentioned, for uh capital projects, which would be uh building out the road on the industrial park, uh it would qualify for up to two hundred fifty thousand, but a maximum of thirty-five percent of the cost. The issue with that is if we get approved for intake one, which we'd have to submit our application by September twenty-fourth, the work has to be completed by March, end of March twenty twenty-six. So you, they do specify that we could ask for an extension, but it's not a guarantee. Uh, it's point-based, I guess, if we were to apply, by the time we're awarded the money, it would be in the winter season and we wouldn't be able to build out the road. So that could be problematic. Secondly, the three hundred twenty-five thousand that uh we'd be responsible for is obviously not budgeted this year, so we'd have to uh ask Miss Craddock ways of of financing it, or we just, if council wishes, we can apply under intake two, budget in the fall uh for a twenty twenty-six project. We're awarded the uh, if we're awarded the funding, we'll probably know in the first quarter, possibly a second quarter of of twenty twenty-six, which would then lead into our construction season, and we could get the project done. Um, that, I think, would be our most realistic and feasible way to get the thirty-five percent funding to build out the industrial park.
But um. The second stream is only fifty thousand maximum.
Not for. For. Not for capital projects, I don't believe.
It's just a different stream of the program.
Sorry?
The second recommendation is a different stream of program that covers studies and like feasibility studies.
Not the stream intake, I should have said.
Okay, because it says intake one and intake two or later. Oh, sorry, we're looking at the inside.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So, um, is is that all from you for now?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments? Counselor Reba.
My one concern with this would be similar to, I guess, after Mr. Carrion mentioned for this first stream. Does it really seem feasible in my opinion? Like, so we actually do have interest here because I know that these lots have been here for quite a while, and I believe there's a crematorium on one and then uh, so. Wouldn't need to be ready then next year's budget, you're already looking at, what, three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be allocated to this. I understand that it's great, you know, to build West Nipissing, I'm all for that, but I'm wondering if we can't even sell the properties we currently have to develop business, commercial, industrial, are we really in a stage where we're ready to, you know, invest that extra money into lengthening it? I understand that, you know, it'd be nice to finish the loop, but I think that's a a serious question that we should be asking ourselves as well. Is I I don't know if anyone's been there, but how long has this been developed? It's been since twenty ten or so.
That land was part of the warehouse or transfer when we acquired the power plant. They owned it prior to, and it was transferred to the municipality, so I'm assuming two thousand three, two thousand four.
Yeah, it's just making me wonder when we're looking at an infrastructure deficit, with bridges and roads and all this, are we really in a in a position to add this to our budget of next year? I just, I just wanted to make that point on my end of things.
Counselor Larry.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, as Counselor said, we said, uh, we, this is something we want, we cooperate all our money on, but the benefit from this is just have one in, one company move in. If if the road is done, it's ready, it'll be more appealing than looking at it in the field. So uh, I'm I'm all in favor to to put, to invest the money in this and to uh the intake two, like you mentioned. And uh because we can't do it in the wintertime, it's closed, they're not closing, which is very hard to to work with around that. But intake two would be perfect, and if it brings one company out of this, the the return for the municipality will be great. So it's, I think, just a way we have to think moving forward.
Yeah, it's just to add on to that, a quick rebuttal would be, I think, getting one proper, one property that we currently have would be a benefit to the municipality. So by adding on another four or five, I don't think we'd be in a position selling these. We could concentrate on the first, there's six remaining, I believe. Five or six would be remaining that haven't been developed by a commercial or industrial unit, right? So uh, I'm all for, you know, if this is a way that council, I'll definitely support council's decision. I'm just thinking when we were discussing about trying to maintain things we currently have or, you know, we do have an opportunity for businesses to come. There are six lots that, if not, there's at least five, and they're just not being picked at right now. So maybe once they are, then I'd I'd look at expanding, that's my opinion.
Um, is the project completion deadline for intake two? What is that? What date is the completion deadline for the other intakes? Do we know?
Don't know specifically.
So March thirty-first is for intake one?
Correct. And I don't have the.
That's a six-month window. Like if they use the same spacing.
So it would be uh August twenty twenty-six?
February twenty-two.
No, February twenty-six is the application, right? So using the uh intake one completion deadline. We want to move this forward, then, do we want to direct staff to look into preparing an application? I mean, I I'd like to see, to be honest, I'm still a bit confused about certain aspects of this and uh, I'd like to understand the potential financials from it. Um, you mentioned possibly recovering some of the road development costs. Would that be competitive? You know, we don't really know how much the lots are worth right now. I feel I'm a little bit in the dark on this.
I I just wanted to say that until it is difficult to get a a proper appraisal on on something that doesn't actually exist. Uh, and so at this time, the value of the land being, somebody said, a field, that's what it is. Um, you know, potentially, it would probably fetch a higher price with an actual road and and with people being able to visualize what it looks like as, you know. But we won't know until we get that done.
If the council is in um general agreement that um that they want to entertain this idea more and that if we're looking at funding that we're going to pass on intake one because of the timelines and and move everything towards intake two, then we'll be able to come back. And and though um the clerk is correct, it's it's hard to sell something that that doesn't exist, we can probably get compare-type information, and we can certainly look at, um, you know, what what the structure of a cost recovery might look like because it's not quite the same as a straight um local improvement, but what kind of options might be there or 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 stacking and things like that. Um, it it was just that we had some rather tight deadlines on this intake one for the rural development and wanted to get the idea in front of council in addition that Mister Poulant had received some inquiries about some additional land. So absolutely, this was kind of that opening saddle, you know, and if 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 council is is saying, yeah, we kind of like both ideas, then we certainly can flesh things out more for council.
I remember, had you raised your hand?
I had raised my hand, but I was going to say much like um, uh, Craddock in that if we are opting for intake two, then we have a little bit more time to do a more thorough examination um of the project and whether or not it's something like, you know, if we're trying to hit it for September twenty-fourth, then there's no time. Um, but if if we're all in agreement that we would like to find a project that uh that that works within this and that this is a good starting point to have a little bit better financial analysis of what it looks like, we actually have time to do that. We don't actually need to direct staff today to apply, um, but we can ask for more information. Um, you know, the intake two is is where we're headed.
I I would agree with that approach, so uh unless there's any other questions or comments, shall we um on a show of hands, direct staff for more information and see how we could look at um intake two? Uh, thank you, that's all. Thank you. That's all uh, for my part of the, I hope, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item is under Public Works six point four point one. Uh, children at play sign. Our chair for Public Works, Counselor Gonye is not with us tonight sadly. We do miss him. Uh, and given that it is an agenda request item from Counselor Revard, uh, I will pass the point to Counselor Revard to chair this portion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Oh.
It surprised.
Thank you.
Uh, so yeah, my agenda request was just regarding, I got a few calls from, I think it was three super residents in that area where they were worried because Doochusak is kind of, it's one of those freshly paved, nice roads, so people quicker on it. By the time they get to Prominence that, they're not quite slowing down as much as residents uh, like. So they're, they're looking for, there's a lot of kids around that area. They were just looking for uh, children at play. Put up kind of just after driving to the road and Kier Road, heading towards Prominence that uh, to potentially try and catch someone's attention so that hopefully slow down for the kids in that area. So I see Counselors saying.
No, sorry, through, I'm looking at the uh, the information that's provided on our municipal uh, website. And when I click on children at play and I click on the link, it talks about the petition is submitted with the hope to start a discussion regarding the extension of municipal water and sewer services along the hill road. So it has nothing to do with what you were talking about. So whilst I was following around along, I'm like, what are we talking about here? So.
Oh.
I would just like to know that so that if that could be changed for our residents, then if they look at the municipal website, that is not at all what we're discussing.
It's on the website.
Yeah, look, after you.
So I didn't do that, right?
No.
No, but it's because I brought forward that agenda request as well.
So that's what I found out.
The agenda request.
I have it on the, that's the right one.
Right, I'm looking at.
And the PDF, I have the right one, but that.
I'm wanting that.
I brought forward the other one.
Yeah, I have the right one.
Well, I guess it's just mine. Sorry.
Sorry about that, Counselor saying to me.
It's probably Counselor Russell.
Uh, through you, Mr. Temporary Chair of Public Works.
Thanks.
Just uh, I'm in the same boat as Counselor St. Louis. I, I see the request for water extension services uh, in the package. So maybe if staff could just take a look for historical purposes, if there's a need to change that and fix it up. Uh, but I'm, I'm in agreement if we want to uh, you know, ask staff what the cost is to get, I know there's a cost to everything, uh, but to look into putting a sign up there. And I'll also uh, re, like a broken record, just mention as well, if we, if residents feel like there's issues of uh, speed on that road, tap into our police services and ask them to maybe have a bit more uh, presence on the road. And, and I'm thinking especially down at that end. Um, it's probably local residents there. That's not a throughway. It's an end and it's a no exit road and once you get to the end of that area. So um, you know, just I guess a note to residents there, just to respect your neighbors and maybe not speed as much. Uh, but if there's an opportunity to curb some speeding through uh, law enforcement, that's always an option as well. But going back to my first point, I'd be in support of looking into uh, getting a sign up there to protect the young people in that area. Thank you.
So, anybody else? No. So by show of hands, would we like to see something come forward next meeting for a cost analysis of one time? Unless you have that off the top here.
Cost analysis or an actual recommendation of design? Because they're no longer um, recommended under the Ontario traffic manual.
Like to put up a sign whatsoever for children.
It's liability on the municipality. It suggests that we're recommending children be on the street in it. Um, it gives a false sense of security for parents, um, assuming that there only be children on the street where there are signs. So they're not something that are currently recommended in the province.
So I could potentially reach out to the people requested and see if, because I know I had mentioned, I had mentioned a lot of people, what they do is they put up their own sign saying. Or something.
Both with the little ones on their front lawns and stuff.
So I take it as your recommendation will come as no, because it.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, you have to follow your guides, right? But I believe, like, we could still technically say we want one there. As counsel, right? So we could still vote if we want to bring it forward or not. Uh, but no, I could reach out to them, I guess, and mention that. The other question, I guess, just after that, do we have any of those signs in storage? I'll just give one to them.
Well, what's the point if we can't use?
No, I don't believe it.
Sounds good. So do we then, just to follow up, should we be removing those signs that are in areas that should we be looking at?
There are areas where we have removed them. There is, there's a few areas where we've kind of discovered them in areas where there's no houses or nothing around. We're not sure why they were put up, so.
Because I see near, near on Clear Lake Road, there's no houses that, at the one spot that they have a children.
Yeah, we're not actively going around removing signs, but.
Thank you. Well, that kind of answers my question. But we'll still ask counsel if we want to override Ms. Heming's great suggestion based on professional expertise. Uh, so by show of hands, you would want to see it come forward. Okay, Counselor Russell, looks like you changed your idea as well.
I just through you, uh, Mr. Chair, I still um, would recommend if there are issues to reach out to our law enforcement to maybe have a little bit more patrol there to curb the speed. Because that's always something that's, that's at our, that's an option for us as well, right?
Okay, thank you, and I'll pass it back over to them.
I will pass it back over to you, Counselor Revard, because we are moving on to community service, which you are actually the chair. Um, and so I'd like to pass Revard to Counselor Revard, please.
I was actually the chair. No, I'm just kidding. So this is enhancing access to spaces for everyone. E A C grant, pass that over to Madam Mayor or Ms. Pinnan.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, um, there's a grant program that was announced, I believe, July fourteenth. Um, it's called the Enhancing Access to Spaces for Everyone Grant. Um, it's a program that provides up to sixty thousand dollars uh, to support projects that uh, remove barriers um, to accessibility. It's uh, it's a rarity that we see this, but they cover a hundred percent of the cost of the project. So um, staff did look at options and and projects that would meet criteria and that we could actually in the next two days, prepare an application and submit it. Uh, the recommendation um, that staff are making would be to submit an application for a, an accessible mat to be installed at the La Cloude beach. So that mat would provide access to water's edge and it would also provide access to the uh, the shelter, the big gazebo, whatever call it, what you wish. So as you get there, uh, it would be uh, accessible, friendly and would permit um, people with disabilities to actually use the mat and be able to uh, move around more freely. We estimate the project uh, to be under sixty thousand, so we would get a hundred percent of the cost recovered. Um, and like I said, I'm confident that our staff will be able to submit the application in the next two days. Because the deadline is uh, August fourteenth, I believe.
Yeah, it's quick.
Thank you. So open up, Counselor Fada.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, um, um, do we have a shortlist to, to consider or?
So we, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we did, we looked at uh, the accessibility platforms, uh, or viewing platforms at both of our arenas. There are logistical issues for us to be able to pull that off that quickly. Uh, logistical issues in the sense that we're, we're space constraint at both of our facilities to install new up to code viewing platforms. Uh, so we couldn't meet those guidelines or those deadlines. We also looked at having the playground in Cache Bay resurfaced. Um, removing the sand and putting a rubber based surface. Then we looked at the pricing for that, uh, because they did the Kiwanis Park in North Bay using that, that surface and it's way more than the sixty thousand. It would have been a big budgetary item. Um, so as far as times constraints are and feasibility and I think viability of the project, we've narrowed it down to one, Counselor. But we, we did certainly look. I, I, I know they had suggested outdoor uh, space would be a priority. So again, we're trying to check a lot of the boxes that the program will uh, hopefully support. And I think this one, and the La Cloude beach being well utilized, I think we'll see a lot of benefit.
Okay.
Um, I think it's a great idea. When Mr. Pinnan and I spoke, the reason why the Sturgeon Falls beaches was, was not recommended for the program, just to put it in context, text that staff has thought it out is because of the slope. Um, to get to the water's edge at the Sturgeon Falls Beach, it provides some challenges where Clear Lake is a much a flatter surface. Uh, the only thing that I would want to consider if uh, if we do want to go ahead with the application for this is that if we are making the public space as far as the beach accessible, um, we would want to look at future years in ensuring that one of the porta johns uh, that is installed at that location is also accessible uh, for people with mobility devices because um, you know, if we, if we get them to the beach for a day of fun, uh, we, we do want to make sure that they can also use bathroom with dignity. So I just want to make sure that that, that would also kind of be included in future planning for the uh, just for how we set up that facility or, or that uh, that asset every year. So uh, you know, like that's, it's just something that came to mind. I know that they do have johns specifically that are wheelchair accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Fada.
Thank you, Counselor.
I should like to follow the, the. The man of the best so. I want a ramp that.
The NESA projects that we'll look at adding and we'll bring them to council at the time. But there certainly are a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, pressures, but it's not the word I'm looking for, but pressures on the water and wastewater budget there. Now, I am gonna have to, you do have a resolution later to approve the water financial plan. I am gonna have to give you a new financial position because the long-term debt does not disappear as it looks like it's disappearing in the end of the, uh, the end of this period. What does happen, and that's why when you're looking at Schedule III again, we have this real kind of crush of cash equivalent at the end of the year. Over the time, obviously, when we're building the Werner expansion, that's to be expected. We have this huge amount of stuff to do in a little bit of time. But what does help us a little bit kind of recover from that is in 29 and 20, in 2030, the two remaining loans that we have right now are done. And so we sort of are able to free up that cash again. So then when we're looking at past this point, you know, whether we have to do additional financing on big projects or whether we just are looking at being able to transfer more into reserves and more to reserves and do some planning. Once we get past this, we're in a better position again. This does grow the transfer to reserve. You know, we're doing sort of 1.2 million now, up to over 2 million in this period. And so that you'll have that money and then the loans pay off as well. So you'll have that money going forward from here. But it is a really crunchy spot in that 26 to 29 period. And then we start to be able to breathe again as we come out of the other hand. So, um, yeah, like I said, this is, this is sort of that, that five-year plan from the, from the water for the purposes of achieving our licensing. There is a resolution later in the agenda for that. But, you know, just to make sure council public that, you know, each, each budget will come back to you and you'll set the rates at each budget season with things. This just sort of lays it out for you that, yes, oh my goodness, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, of financing required to get through the capital that's on our plate right now. I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Crater. So I just, just got the one question for the cash rules for capital transaction. That would be like, I see a big number of 12 million in 26. That with the expectation that we'd start the project from Werner to Sturgeon? Okay. So what's, what's the total you're expecting to be roughly? What's, what, what did you project?
For the Werner project? So, um, we just recently submitted the application and we use sort of, it's just over 24 million. And that includes not just the construction, but the engineering, the project management. There is a contingency built in there as well. So that's if the $24 million project is what's used in unit.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor?
Is the 24 million just the pipeline or does that also include some of the upgrades that we spoke about in regards to the Werner water tower and any other minor kind of in-ground distribution?
So it does, sorry. I, I don't want to do this.
Sorry, yeah.
For you, Mr. Chair. It, it does include the, the water tower upgrades. It includes the transitioning of the existing water plant to a pumping station.
As well as some of the work that has to get done at the end.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Perfect. That's just what I wanted to know whether it did encompass all the kind of bits to get us where we need to be on that. Thank you.
Uh, I just got one more question before, open the floor before I forget. It, it talks about the PC pipes having a lifespan of zero to 99 years. I always wondered how long these PC pipes, so they could go to 99 years and plus?
Well, that's, it doesn't, it didn't exist 99 years. Yes.
I don't know.
That is the current recommendation. I mean, you won't know for sure. We'd like to hope so.
I'll open the floor. Any comments or questions? Yes, or Councilor Dadd?
Thank you, Councilor. All right. My question would be timeline. When would this, if we start till next year? What's the timeline to finish?
So it was actually, again, in the, um, the funding proposal as a three-year project. I don't know, Miss Sanning, if you've got sort of, you know, whether, whether we hit by this point and the systems are in line and we're just finishing it. But it was, it was proposed as a three-year project in the funding proposal.
So it was like a year of design and two years of construction, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so you say one year design, two years to build?
Yes.
Isn't the design already done?
Preliminary design is done. Detail design would need to be done. So we would need to be doing bore holes and surveys and.
Okay. And we got an understanding with the CP rail? Over.
Do you have an agreement in principle, I believe?
It's not finalized yet, right?
No, it hasn't been finalized, but we've been holding off until we're actually ready to move forward before that agreement's finalized.
Okay, thank you. I just had one more question. Some, just about what we talked about the last meeting about doing a trial with a few filters in the houses. Any, anything going on with this or?
I'm working on a report for that. You'll be seeing it at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
After you, Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much, Councilor Crater. And that wraps up committee of the board. I will say this may be the longest agenda we've ever seen. It does go on 24 pages, so we'll have to drop some. We will move on to item, uh, 7.1, first item in our regular meeting, which is the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Um, prior to reading the resolution, Madam Chair, it was brought to my attention just a few minutes ago that there is a small typo in the last resolution which was on the, um, on the addendum. I've made the required correction to the bylaw to reflect the parts on the plan that are being assumed by the municipality.
So how would you pull that and deal with it separately or would you like to?
It's council's decision. So whether they want to deal with it separately or just.
What's the nature of the change?
If the parts on the plan, the, the resolution reflected only part three. When in fact, there are parts, there are three parts to the rule assumption. They were just small and missed on.
Is council comfortable with Madam Clerk having made the housekeeping amendments and the updated, uh, bill of process? I'm fine with that. Council's fine with that. Okay. So I'll have the motion for the consent agenda, please.
It is moved by Councilor Ferrer and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for the council and committee, the whole meeting held on August the 12th, 2025, be approved as presented.
Just one, that item should be pulled anyway because Councilor Ferrer has the community interest just on 7.1.7. So if I can have a motion to pull 7.1.7 from consent agenda, Councilor Rebar, Councilor St. Louis. And then we'll proceed with, all in favor of pulling 7.1.7 for consent agenda? Thank you. Approved. Consent agenda resolution about 7.1.7, please.
It is, uh, it is be resolved that the consent agenda for the council and committee, the whole meeting held on August the 12th, 2025, be approved as amended.
Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie. You could have voted on her. Okay. Thank you. And then have 7.1.7 read separately, please.
It is moved by Councilor Ferrer and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw, yeah. That's right. You can't move it.
I'll move it.
Yeah, I've got actually council, I wrote Rebar, but I don't know why I said Ferrer. It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202564, being a bylaw to accept and dedicate lands for public highway purposes, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed. Part of the east half of the north half of Lot 12, Concession 5, in township of Springer, being parts 1, 3, and 5 on Plan 36R 15391, municipality of West Nippising, being parts of the traveled road known as Lot 5.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, we move on to 7.2, which is planning. Three items there. Two were included as part of the addendum.
It is moved by Councilor St. Louis and seconded by Councilor Larrabee. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202565, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality, to execute a subdivision agreement with 1369965 Ontario Inc., shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Ferrer and seconded by Councilor Larrabee. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202567, being a bylaw to amend zoning.
66 first, please. 7.2.2 is currently called? Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Larrabee and seconded by Councilor Ferrer. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202566, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445, rezone certain lands located at 700 Burnt Lake Road from rural RU to rural exception zone 14, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Ferrer and seconded by Councilor Larrabee. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202567, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445, to rezone certain lands located at St. Amola Road from shoreline residential exception zone 20 to shoreline residential exception zone 23, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Questions or comments? Is that a question or comment or pre?
Sorry.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. At this point, it is exactly 9:30. There are some remaining items on our agenda to deal with. Anybody like to make a motion to extend curfew, Councilor Rebar, Councilor Ferrer? Okay, as we learned last time, we do need it to, for this to pass.
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Ferrer. At approximately 9:30 PM, a motion was tabled to extend the meeting beyond regular curfew in order to proceed with the agenda.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie? And so we continue. Section 7.3, correspondence. There is a document in your agenda package that's in regards to training session being offered by MMAH in October. It is just kind of a safe date at this point and as more information becomes available. I will be forwarded to you, Madam Clerk, so this item is included for information only. Now we move on to section 7.4, new business.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Whereas council has reviewed the proposed renewal agreement covering the 2025-29 hockey season, be it resolved that council authorizes the mayor and chief administrative officer to execute the renewal agreement with 9772642 Canada LTD, the West Nippising Lynx Hockey Club, or the 2025-2029 hockey seasons.
Okay, questions, comments? All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Palinay and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Whereas council has received a discretionary grant application from the United Club 50 for the use of the Cash Bay Hall over seven dates for community events. And whereas the total value of the requested waiver is $4,200, be it resolved that pursuant to policy 2024-137 discretionary grant, council authorizes the fee waiver of $4,200 for the Cash Bay United 50 Seniors Club in accordance with their application dated July 11th, 2025.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Palinay. Whereas the Northern Ontario Women's NOW Association provides a collaborative forum for women in municipal government across Northern Ontario to engage in advocacy, professional development, and intermunicipal networking. And whereas the municipality of West Nippising recognizes the value of such engagement and wishes to support ongoing participation in the NOW Association, be it resolved that the council authorizes the municipality of West Nippising to become a member of the Northern Ontario Women's NOW Association, effective immediately, and to remit the applicable annual membership fees. And be it further resolved that policy number 2033 memberships be amended to include the Northern Ontario Women's Association under council, under the council category of annually renewable memberships.
Okay, just as a note, the cost for that is $25 per member. So for Councilor Nicol and myself to be involved would be an annual cost of $50 per year. And for that one day, when we have nine members of council who are all women, then it would go up to $450. So just so that the council's aware of the cost before making a vote on that. Questions or comments on that? Councilor Rebar?
Thank you, through you. I just wonder if, at the same time that we do this, can we, under recreation, it shows all the memberships, West Nippising Chamber of Commerce, like as a housekeeping?
Yes, and I think there was one other housekeeping item. And that is that the Rural Ontario Municipal Association is shown under a staff one instead of under council. But if staff sees any others that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it before we bring back the policy amendment.
Okay.
It's under public works.
So the policy will come back separately as an update?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is to approve the immediate expense? And then the policy would come back, Councilor Restool? Oh, sorry, pre-voting?
Pre-voting.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? It's Carrie. Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Palinay. Whereas the province of Ontario has launched the Enhancing Access to Spaces for Everyone Grant to support municipalities in improving accessibility to public spaces. And whereas the municipality of West Nippising recognizes the importance of creating accessible inclusive environment for all residents, be it resolved that staff be authorized to prepare and apply under the Ease Grant Program by the applicable deadline for the accessibility mats to be installed at the Clear Lake Beach.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Palinay and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Be it resolved that council supports the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 225's Memorial Banner Campaign in coordination with the annual poppy campaign? And that the municipality authorizes the use of existing lamppost brackets to display veteran banners from October the 15th to November the 15th annually? And that municipal staff assist with the annual installation and removal of the banners?
Questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, Carrie.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Palinay. Whereas highways 11 and 17 are vital to Northern Ontario's economy, transportation safety, and national connectivity. And whereas the Federation of Ontario Northern Ontario Municipalities is advocating for a phased upgrade to the two-plus-one highway model, which offers significant safety and economic benefits. Be it resolved that the West Nippising municipality supports FANAM's call for federal and provincial investment in the two-plus-one highway model on highways 11 and 17? And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution and letter be sent to the Prime Minister of Canada, the Premier of Ontario, and the Minister of Transportation, and the Federation of Ontario Northern Municipalities?
Okay, questions, comments? I'm, uh, sorry, Councilor Palinay?
One question. I'm just curious, percentage, two-in-one highway, I saw on TV, but I missed it. It means there's, there'd be no oncoming traffic on, on the line, on the, on the same lane. So there'd be no head-on collision?
Like a passing lane, like a passing lane? I believe there's a barrier system. And so then you're going in and out. So there's a barrier if you're going, like a, like how we have our passing lanes now on the highway?
Yeah.
But then a barrier from the oncoming traffic.
Okay, so but the rest of the highway is the same. It's just the passing lane that would have a barrier?
Well, no, it's would be like a three-lane highway where for five kilometers, everyone going eastbound pass, and then for five kilometers, everyone going westbound could pass. So you kind of switch back and forth, your passing lanes.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a, that's a long project.
Yeah.
It's a very long project. Other questions or comments? Councilor Larrabee?
I would be, thank you. I would be very pleased to support this because that's the least they could offer, two-plus-one. We were hoping with the mayors from up north on Highway 11, we're hoping to get two lanes each way, but two-plus-one would do it anyway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
All right, sorry. I was looking at your, are we gonna have like the West Nippising letterhead on your letter? Or is it just coming like just a blank page municipality of West Nippising? I was just wondering if it's more official.
Coming directly from the municipality?
I, I expect so. I don't know a lot about this. It's too long.
Yeah, I just thought it looked funny when I saw that. It was just kind of a blank page.
I think we would put it on municipal letterhead. That was just a pro forma.
Or send the res, yeah, send the resolution. Okay, thank you. All in favor, please? That's Carrie. Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Palinay. Whereas the municipality of West Nippising is eligible to apply for funding under the Rural Ontario Development Program. And where staff have identified potential projects aligned with the program criteria and municipal priorities. Be it resolved that council supports the submission of the industrial park road construction under ROD Program Intake Number Two. And be further resolved that council, that staff be authorized to prepare and submit the necessary applications.
No, you don't want it? Okay, so I'll just speak to this briefly.
No resolution.
Because it was coming back. If we defeat it, then it has to be brought back as a motion to reconsider. Whereas if there is a deferral, if somebody puts in, am I correct on procedure here? If we do a motion to defer this, then we can bring it back at a future meeting when we're ready to have that discussion. Council?
Alternatively, you could make this, the motion could be read as for intake one. And you could decline intake one and have access to take two.
Because intake two is gonna be an actual budget discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do you want to change?
You can leave it at intake one and then just decline.
It's on two.
No, it's on, it's on one intake. Yeah, it's intake two, so we'd have to change it.
So it's been read in as intake two. So can I just get a motion to defer and make this wait till we bring it back? Defer would be preferable. Okay, Councilor Ferrer, Councilor St. Louis? And defer to budget?
Yep.
Thank you. All in favor of the deferral? I'm sorry, questions or comments on the deferral? All in favor of the deferral? Carrie? And that's, that's that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, it is moved by Councilor Palinay and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Whereas the province of Ontario, through the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, will begin aerial spraying of glyphosate-based herbicides in late August 2025 in the Nippising, in the West Nippising forest. And whereas the Nippising forest covers a significant portion, if not all, of the West Nippising municipality and residents, and ecosystems may be impacted by this activity. And whereas new scientific evidence published since Health Canada's last assessment of glyphosate in 2017 has linked glyphosate-based end-use products, products to cancer, metabolic, and neurological diseases, reproductive toxicity, and ecosystem harm. And whereas the province of Ontario banned the use of glyphosate for forestry purposes in 2001 and replaced aerial herbicide spraying with manual forest thinning as a safer alternative to forest management. And whereas many residents have expressed concern regarding the potential environmental and public health risks associated with aerial spraying. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality requests that the Honorable Mike Harris Jr., Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, reconsider the planned use of glyphosate-based herbicides in the Nippising forest and suspend the aerial spraying initiative until further independent research and updated risk assessments are completed. And be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Natural Resources, the Honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health, MPP John Vantoff, AMO FANAM, and all municipalities in northeastern Ontario.
Okay, questions or comments? Councilor Restool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. I wanted to thank council for considering this resolution and subsequent letter to be sent to the ministry. Heard a lot online, heard a lot individually with individuals contacting myself. And I'm sure some people, some other councillors may have heard the same. I know we had a demonstration outside of Town Hall this evening, supporting this motion moving forward. And so I appreciate all of, all of that. I also wanted to just mention that, you know, for those watching, that this is our, this could be our, if it is supported, position within our municipality. It doesn't by any means indicate that it's gonna stop. That's a provincial initiative, but it does show our, you know, our support to, to not moving forward with this. And timing-wise, it can be, we are in a good place because we are, some of us are heading to AMO next week. Will be seeing a lot of these ministers there. There'll be opportunities to, you know, advocate even further on this issue and hopefully have some reconsideration to at least delay like the, like the resolution mentions, delay this activity until further research is done. And my last comment I just wanted to share is that as a council, we do read a land acknowledgement at the start of all of our meetings. And it is to, you know, honor the lands that, that our community is based on and the traditional lands of Dohice and Nippising and Tamagami. So it, it's a lot of great effort that we're putting into rebuilding relationships. And this is an opportunity to, you know, kind of put our money where our mouth is and support those communities and their efforts as well to protect their traditional lands as we move forward. So I just wanted to share those comments. I know we're running late, but thanks for your consideration of this resolution.
Thank you, Councilor Restool. Other questions or comments? Uh, Councilor Palinay?
Madam Mayor? I don't know if the staff, I don't know if Miss Sanning knows about that. No, that's.
I can't.
Okay.
It's on this.
I don't know if somebody at this table knows a bit about it. Why they use that spray? What's the purpose? And how long have they been doing it? And are they going over just Crown land or do they touch private lands or? Should I have a message to it? If I was?
I mean, I can respond to, Councilor Larrabee, can you want to respond, Councilor Larrabee?
It depends how far you want to go. I got from the beginning.
Oh, please, no, please. Like, we, we literally have.
I don't want to go with the.
Okay, go on. All right, so they use that, it kills the, the leaf, leaf trees. They, they plant small trees, really small, but the leaf trees are like the weed trees. So they grow faster. And those small, could call them seedlings that they plant, they, those, the other ones block the sun, so they can't grow. So by killing the leaf trees, you get all that they're planting grows. So it's a successful way to do it for them. But it's got devastating on wildlife, on creeks, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Palinay. Other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Be it resolved that council authorizes an exemption to the West Nippising Municipality Noise Bylaw for family and friend celebration, the live band event hosted by Norm Castilleu on Saturday, August 16th, 2025, at 151 Woodgo Street in Sturgeon Falls.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? I'll let you vote before I pass it. Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Whereas municipality of West Nippising recognizes the importance of ensuring consistent, transparent, and accountable process for identification, redeployment, and disposal of surplus municipal equipment and assets. Be it resolved that council of the West Nippising municipality hereby adopts the surplus equipment disposal policy as presented, effective August 12, 2025.
Okay, questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Whereas the Sewer and Water Committee recommends the approval of the Water Financial Plan 202301A. And whereas the plan confirms the financial viability of the West Nippising municipality's water system in accordance with Ontario Regulation 45307. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality approves the water financial plan. And be it further resolved that staff be authorized to file the plan with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing as required.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Be it resolved that second quarter financial reports for the West Nippising municipality be received.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Whereas the municipality of West Nippising issued bid number 202524 Whereas the municipality of West Nippising issued bid number 202524 for the completion of a Phase 2 environmental site assessment for the property at 281 Corcel Road, and whereas nine submissions were received and evaluated based on established scoring criteria by municipal staff and project consultants, and whereas KGS Group received the highest overall score and submitted a proposal in the amount of $50,415, be it resolved that council awards the contract for the Phase 2 environmental site assessment at 281 Corcel Road to KGS Group in the total amount of $50,415 as further submitted proposal, and be it further resolved that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to execute any necessary documents to proceed with the project.
Questions or comments on that? Counselor Palinay?
How long you figure it's gonna take with that phase, and is there another phase afterwards?
Our answer, we're expecting this to be completed by probably end of November. And it's, and if there's more work required, it's gonna depend on what they find.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Sorry, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Whereas requests for quotations were sought for asphalt sheeting of Highway 64 on Dufferin Street to Sabre Road, and whereas three quotations were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendations received, be it resolved that the quotations for asphalt sheeting of Highway 64 from Dufferin Street to Sabre Road be awarded to Pioneer Construction in the amount of $403,388.16, being the lowest quotation meeting all specifications.
Questions or comments? Counselor Palinay?
One last question, Miss Sanning. How could there be that much difference in that poll? They're needing the same.
I think they were hungry for work. It was later in the season that this went out. To contractors like we have work, we were budgeting $3,000 for this, so...
Which is good there. It's unreal, the difference. Good?
Okay, and my only question would have been budget, and thank you for answering that in advance. So other questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, I will talk fast. The next item is just the mayor's report. I'll say it is a very busy weekend around West Nippising. We have the Sturgeon Falls Farmers Market on Saturday at King Street. There is the North Minnetville Women's Star of the North Institute Harvest Supper on Saturday evening, which is always a favorite line. Expecting I'll see Counselor Ferrer there as well. And as of Sunday, we will have we will have members of council heading to Ottawa for the annual AMO conference, at which we have, I believe, would be a record-breaking, five delegations booked with different ministries. So we do have a busy couple of days ahead of us there, and I'll report to the work there. I know that Counselor Restool and Counselor Ferrer's plan to speed a little bit to the aerial spraying. There are some other big items kind of on our radar that they manage. So I would like to thank staff for putting together a very large, very complex agenda. There was a lot of items on there, probably the largest. So thank you for your work on that one, and thank you to council for your patience in getting through this together with that, Madam Clerk.
It is moved by Councilor Nicol and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202568, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on August the 12th, 2025, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Rebar and seconded by Councilor Nicol. Be it resolved that council, committee, the whole meeting be adjourned.